We have the invocation by Commissioner Gasta, followed by the closing of the mission.
Dear everybody, thank you for allowing us to get together for the next thing business. We ask that you guide us, that you instruct us in doing the proper decisions to benefit our city. We ask for that you bless this great city and we ask that you bless this great nation. We ask you, Lord, that you bless our police officers and our soldiers in armed way. And we ask you, Lord, that you bless us all in this Christmas holiday. You just came, I pray.
Next business in order, item one C, public forum, is Benio.
Here. May I talk to you? Commissioner Flores?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Joe?
Here.
You have a forum here.
Thank you. Next business in order, item one C, public forum. Do we have anyone signed up for public forum?
Yes, I have Mr. Andy of Memphis.
I don't have the voice of Andy of Memphis. I'm not allowed to. And I thought I was going to sing the National Anthem, but I guess you're not going to let me. So I'm actually here to introduce and very briefly talk about our radio station, Mayor Nanda 9521. Ladies and gentlemen, here are part of the staff that will be running the station. It was under management by somebody else. And the shareholders, and there's 20 of us, 20 shareholders that own the radio station, are in the process of redoing the programs, different voices, a different type of music. I think the mayor already honored our station by being on live last week with Andy. Two weeks ago. And so we want to get intimately involved with our community and being able to let people know how good we are there is. The station is heard all the way to about Ware Road in McAllen. So we have an audience that includes the western part of the town of McAllen. And it goes all the way up to Zapata on the, towards the western side. We would like to do business with the, with the city and like to get, get some help and some support from all of you. So we're just here to introduce ourselves. If there's any questions, maybe somebody in the staff can answer it.
So can we look at doing some programming information that pertains to city events, city activities, city accomplishments, or what do you see that, how does he work?
I see us being 100% engaged in working with you, but I'd like for some of the staff, can you answer that?
I know that we are going to be presenting to the manager, different packages for you guys, especially for you all. We're also waiting to help you guys with, of course, public announcements, which I know that is included. I know that you all have worked for the station before. I know that you kind of, you know, have them handle all the business. I am also very, very connected to the music industry. I work with a lot of groups, so I'm able to do the same thing. I can offer all types of music, entertainment, any type of entertainment you all want to do. I mean, I have access to all of it. Of course, I mean, we can get you, of course, way better prices than, you know, we can match what you are doing right now. And like I said, we do carry lights in the valley. Gracias a Dios, I have people from San Antonio, Houston, Corpus, Gonzalez, Laredo that follow us. So it's a pretty good station. We're doing really well, and the first one really well too. Of course, as my showed, I changed the music style a little bit, so I've made a big impact. A lot of people, we sell a lot of the vinyls in the start, I mean, some desk for that, so it's good.
That's good. Thank you. I hear you guys every day on the way to Amber. You have a strong signal all the way to 21?
Yes, yes, we do. We sit all the way to 107 and pass 21, and it's pretty strong back there. And we get close to Fonturas and pass Zapata, and of course, we can even read sometimes to Monterrey. So we hit all of Montero, Tamalientes as well.
And thank you for that invite, by the way. We were able to advertise the parade, the station, and with the local. As your handler name, Mr. Rangeless and I went and definitely had a blast and handled a lot of individuals that commented about being reached, not just in this area, but also in the Idaho County area, deep into Mexico. So thank you so much for having the opportunity to advertise, of course, because it isn't as public as everything is on paper or public or repulsive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't want to come sit down and work, talk numbers here. We will bring you all the packages here and bring, you know, sit down at a more, you know, calm, calm time and be able to work on it a little better. We get here, we'll be sitting here for, so yeah, so we will bring you the packages that we made for you guys and, you know, if there's something that you got a question, of course, I can always talk to our manager, the owners, and we can work something out. This is, I mean, we're here helping each other. It's our community, so we want to be able to work with everyone we can.
Thank you very much. We will now sign the demonstrations, public forum. Next, we have item one G, supplemental reports. Mayor, let's keep that short. We do have some new employees. Police Department has hired some new folks. Like to introduce them?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner. Oh, your wrist. These are a couple of replacement officers and a couple of the three officers, the new positions that you guys gave us this past pledge. Officer Corona was a supervisor with us, had left, he came back. Officer Albert Garcia, he's a replacement. We hadn't introduced him yet, so I told him to come out here. Officer De La Garasa, he's one of the new hires. And officer, sorry, Communication Officer, José Torres, he's one of our communications officers that we replaced. We do have one more female officer coming in, Stephanie Shaquan, but unfortunately she couldn't make it here tonight, and she doesn't start officially till Sunday. So we're adding another female to the department.
How many do we have females?
Will be five females so far in the department, all certified peace officers. So I just wanted to introduce them to you guys so they could know who are commission and our mayors. So if you guys have any questions for...
Do you want to take the mic and say a few words? You can tell that one of them wants to do that.
Hello, my name is De La Garasa Junior. I'm a peace officer since 2009. That's pretty much it. I have gotten the opportunity to work with the Grand State Police Department and the opportunity to become a supervisor here for a bit. I am back, and hopefully we'll see where it needs us.
Hello, I'm Albert Garcia. I'm basically in the team of peace officer. I'm glad that the city gave me a chance. I really appreciate it. And I'm here to do my part. I was a former soldier, now full-time, I'm a full-time peace officer here to serve my community and my country. So thank you for your service.
My name is De La Garasa. I come from Mission, Texas. I'm already not much for words, but I really appreciate the city giving me an opportunity to work here, and I'm really looking forward to what the future has to talk to me here. So I'm going to be a part of it.
Hello, my name is José Torres. This is my first job in law enforcement, so I want to just thank the city of Carolina for giving me the opportunity to work here.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Come up here, please, and take a photo with our new officers.
I think this is the first time that they actually speak to me.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
Morning, editor.
Okay, there we go. One, two, and three. One, two, and...
Thank you. Thank you. Here's another department, Victor, he's got some folks he can also hire. Public one.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, Mr. Perez, here are four guys that we just hired. Zerrando and Antonio, they're, they got in here like in August. And...
What is coming?
And Mr. Falcone, they got here just like three, three weeks ago, so thank you for... Mr. Falcone is in the brush truck, so he's responsible for all the brush. Mr. Zamora, he's in charge of the tractor. He's driving a John Deere tractor.
Longboard.
The longboard. And Mr. Reyes and Mr. Torres, he's very responsible for Main Street and Second Street, Tama Soro, and now the other unit that we have to do here in the city. Thank you for...
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, second street, main street, we share...
Thank you, sir. And welcome.
One, two, and three. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Is there anyone else who got into the light in Congress or public forum? Please, we're pretty busy. Thank you. Moving on to item two, this is consent agenda. Is item eight approved and given as a property request letter? Being a official member of previous meetings? Had a capacity, permission?
Yeah, Mayor, the company, the, 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 okay, we have votes to approve by items two, eight, and the view by Commissioner Ramirez, the second amendment, second by Commissioner York. Any further discussion? Open the favor signified by saying no. Sorry. A vote.
Next, this is number 33, resolutions that are raised, essential wants to lax for vendors on this 2019 that's ten, approving the updated 2019 water conservation plan. Mayor and Commissioners, we were asked to update our conservation plan, and the main change is section four. Most sea filters, section four is new, everything else is the same. Would you like that?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Basically, we're, we're ready to update this, our water conservation plan, because we submitted, as you know, we're, we submit for grant with the Texas Water and Revenue Council, and they sent us back an email saying that we needed to update our conservation plan, so we have since done that and submitted to them. We just need to get passed by the commissioners, that we can, you know, get the green light up to proceed. Like I said, this is, obviously, we're trying to apply for some funding. We're, we're still in the works of trying to get, you know, funding and suggest to help us along the process, with the process.
How do we monitor the conservation of this plan? The house? Yes, you're hearing me that you're trying to redo the, maybe, the actual position of water from $100,000 to $100,000 per person per day. How do you monitor that?
It's a good question, and I don't have the answer.
I always think, you know, the household, how many folks live in that household?
That's what, actually, me and Mr. G, we're actually talking about that. That's why he's the pig guy.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Generally, on a plan, Mr. Ramirez, is what the state wants the city to do, be proactive and work with the community to, to suggest water-saving measures, promote water-saving devices in the houses, the low-flow toilets, low-flow showers, faucets and such, and that sort of thing, just to try and reduce the consumption, you know, water is a limited resource, especially here on the border. We all pull our water from the real beginning, river, that ain't low water coming down that river, so we have to be, you know, really careful where you use. June, kinds of drought, making sure that you implement your drought contingency plans, your, you know, set your watering day, your no-watering day, limit your car washing, and that sort of stuff. It's not essential water use and trying to get your, your water consumption total in general down. So it's, it's an ongoing process throughout the year of education and promotion.
Promoting like ESAs, for example, fixing leak deposits, the toilets, as we mentioned, and obviously there's some that have half functioning device, things like...
Overwatering, you see somebody, and not many people water with the yard chair with automatic breakers, but those that do, you see some that, you know, they're going out to the street, and telling you just running the water down a gutter, bring it to their attention. That, that's...
Water, for example, when it's early in the morning, it takes like that...
Probably fixing water leaks. All that contributes to what your, your calculated per capita consumption is.
Go ahead and keep it in the public.
And you're getting the public and keeping close to that in your system.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any questions? We can take a motion at this time. Okay, we have a motion to approve item three A by Commissioner Ramirez, technical by Commissioner Gasta for the discussion. Always in favor to be signed by saying no, I hope. She carries. If there's no objection at this time, would like to move to executive session. Item six, executive session, item eight, as the case of the city attorney regarding legal levying on Texas county section laws. There are B, consultation with city attorney regarding the town of Gilbert, which is three cases on the life of the city, if they go down to the city, sign orders. Section C, consultation with city attorney regarding personal matters. And item D, consultation with city attorney regarding legal issues. Set seventy zero ACB, zero zero five two, United States of America, which is one thirty one thousand nine hundred ninety, essential plan, or that is situated throughout county of Texas at all. Objection, moving on to executive session. It is six, twenty-seven. For battle on executive session, it is eight eighteen PM. Current back to item four, contract is in agreement. Let the rate of essential possible action on the land of Nova Theater for the St. Ives Raptor Tribe to support commercial center for the EDA project number zero eight zero one zero five zero seven four.
Yeah, Mayor, Mr. This project is for Radix Valley Act construction of the street, with, via the city street. Wednesday, November eighteen, we opened up five bids, five bidders for the project. The bidders were Aquatic Construction LLC and High Factory Reconstruction LLC, High Sparkway Construction LLC, and Fourth Fading Inc. All bids are complete, and the bid in sending order were for $859,390, $941,370, $983,064, $1,010,000, $10,086,020, and $1,599,771 respective in the order that I, that I, the bidders. The low bidder was Monza's Construction. I think the end construction of High Star has a minor mathematical error, but even after correction, the order of the bids did put in that effect, and it was still the same order, the price was still low. We had scheduled, and we had a estimate, a construction cost of $873,293,020, so it's about, about $14,000 below the, from the low of the estimate. We were, we were going to amend the warning, not accept it in the long day, because this is, is...
Recommendation for the building construction.
Yes, sir.
And there's, it might be that, since we have been given a need for that, can we go out? You do? Leave it alone? I don't know. It's a regional project, and Radix Tribe is too... Too local? Too local. But you don't know, you're not from your local... I also recommend this one that you, so maybe you're something, maybe you can get some kids on the outside. Anything to go to the, I do the market drive. I think a little earlier, this is a little... It's all right. You're not the first one of that.
But if you're asking, uh, good, I do like Radix rather than the hunt. If you want brother for other...
You also decide.
Yeah.
Okay?
I probably would ask other departments...
You know, social media and on the outside. What is the consensus for the director and other staff? I don't have a consensus. I think we just put a list together for you, like you decide. What do you need to measure to not name something? Second choice? Start them off, second choice. Like, um, this is international. I've been in San Antonio, start them off pretty quick. The multiple options still? Well, I just, the office moving on. So, motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Second. Okay, four A, item to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Jones, votes in favor, signified by saying no, I hope. She carries. Next is item four B, discussion of possible actions to award contract to Gonzalez Construction LLC for the St. Ives Raptor Tribe to support commercial center for the EDA project number zero eight zero one zero five zero seven four.
I mean, this particular item will have to be approved, will have to be approved conditionally or pending some action by the EDA. A couple of things, this property is funded by the EDA, therefore, the property itself has to be in the city's possession. It's not yet. The, the, this official word, we have a plaque recorded right now, which says then the plaque would have dedicated that right away to the city by dedication. That hasn't happened, because there's been some issue with the water rights, some other issues. We're close to that. In fact, the last word I had with the developer was that it wanted to have a regular deal for, for, for planning by the end of the year, so I'm certainly going to have to hear, you know, after, after the new year. That's one thing. And, and two, pending that, that we have an easement, a granted easement to work on the property, and the EPA should, I mean, have the EPA consider and donate, let that serve as the fact of ownership in order to proceed with the construction. In other words, we can't really award a contract, proceed with the construction until that that issue is, is settled. So any approval of this item would have to be pending EPA release, to, to release the contract or, or conditionally on, on the city acquiring the property right away this year.
Yeah, I'd like to explain the process that EPA goes through. So there's two authorizations they provide, and one of them is once the bid commenced, which is this part, and they require certain documents. Then they authorize us to email saying, okay, you are now ready to walk in, going to signing a contract. After that, contract documents come in, performance, insurance, those are sent to them, they review those, they check into the bonding company and the insurance company, and then they do their second authorization. Okay, now you're ready to issue, collect, to proceed. In this case, like you were said, awarded in the EDA authorization. What I asked him is, we can go down that route as soon as we get that authorization, then issue the notice of award to the contractor, and then he can move forward. What she does not want to see is that the bonding company has a date prior to the contract. So we are waiting on the recorded easement, so legal department at EDA can review it and tell us, you can use that in lieu of the plaque being recorded. That's what we're pending. There's still some work to be done in the area. Another contractor in that mentioned that he could start working on the storm server. The elevations there will be looked at this Friday. It'll be the first that will be taken. It will be a test. If you all remember, the excavation is not to, to remove more than what is necessary along the creek, and that dirt is, is being spread out, compacted, you see it every day. And then, of course, your crew will go out at the elevations, build, try to drill, see how much dirt was taken. But it is a lot of dirt that we moved, the last, almost 4,700 cubic yards in one day.
That's what they've been averaging, by some of the cannon and lucky trips. The weather's out that room, so they're, they're just picking up the dirt and dropping it, which is pretty, 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 so it's a pretty smooth operation.
It seems to be an idea that when you pass by, that they're moving relatively smoothly.
Yes, sir.
No, no issues at the mall or anything having to do with the dirt. They're actually moving more dirt than what we expected to move, and so they're, they're moving more than the minimum.
They're making up time for some of the delays at the beginning.
The, 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 in the, in the, I know that it's been passing, it's a, we go bargain, they'll look at the compact, it will be natural, ground, ninety-five percent of mass, but that's relatively easy to achieve, and they have, and then it's a passing effort.
So then we're looking at the, the motion, but to be pending...
EDA.
EDA, EDA, I'm sorry, I was focused, EPA, EDA, pending, uh, authorization to proceed.
Dr. Will, to take a motion at this time? Number one?
No, Mayor, I approve the, the, most of the, I'm presented, pending EDA.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, item four B, by Commissioner B, and second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Open the favor signified by saying no, I hope. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, this is motion item five, city managers, reporting discussion of possible actions to otherwise be managed to negotiate against keyball documents needed for the purchase of two 2019 vehicles. Mayor and Commissioner, these vehicles are for the Public Works Department? I don't know if it is here. And no, we're not on a status of dealership here, anything, just that these departments have been honored for quite some time, and so these are vehicles that we, please, please do how it's going to be, they're refreshment of our, our... Do you want anything you would like to add?
Uh, well, it's a two, 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 2019 single tank pickup trucks, so I need to eliminate two of our, our own trucks, they're pretty in bad condition, so...
The repairs are just becoming...
Yeah.
And we're looking at local?
Yes.
And we're all in the best... Going back and forth. you want to, if 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 you want to, if